Here. Trustee Moore Baldoff.
Here.
Trustee Backhorst.
Present.
Trustee Ursink.
Here.
President Mckegg.
Here.
Trustee Warren.
Here.
And trustee Stokebrand is excused.
Thank you. Has the meeting been noticed?
Yes, it's been posted and noticed according to law.
Thank you. Moving on to item four, special order of business, we have none this evening. Moving on to item five, consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Oh, moved.
There's second?
I'll second.
All right, so trustee Backhorst seconded by, who's gonna call that one?
I have trustee Ursink.
Okay, great. Any discussion?
I need to, yeah, sorry, I need to recuse myself from voting on item 5F. Northwestern Mutual is my employer, so I should not be voting on granting them a special event permit.
Can we pull that then and vote separately? Why don't we pull it and vote separately?
That would be my recommendation, just pull that one separate.
Okay. Any other discussion about the consent agenda? All right, seeing none, motion to approve seconded by trustee Ursink. All those in favor approving the consent agenda with the exception of 5F. Raise your hand or voice.
Aye.
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 Any, any approved? I mean, any opposed? All right, hearing none, consent agenda passes with the exception of 5F. Item six, items removed from the consent agenda, item 5F. This is a park and beach permit for Northwestern Mutual on October 6 through 8, 2021. Believe this is a request to use the beach for filming a video, promotional video. Trustee Warren is an employee of Northwestern Mutual, and would you like to say anything more about recusing yourself this time?
Excuse me, did you recall, I totally, were you talking, you're calling on me?
Yes, I guess just to, for the, for the record, you can state that you're gonna recuse yourself, I guess, and then we'll...
For the record, as an employee of Northwestern Mutual, I'm recusing myself from this vote. I don't know, Nate, maybe you could advise me, is it proper for me just to not vote, or do I abstain?
There's a, there's a case called Ballinger that came out about 20 years ago that said, if there is a specific conflict of interest and somebody doesn't vote, you could just note that in, in, you know, it'll just be noted in the minutes. And then it also makes a difference in, if someone recuses themselves because of a specific conflict of interest, they wouldn't count towards the number of individual, they wouldn't be counted as quote unquote "present" or towards the quorum. But we have six, and then even if you with recuse yourself, we still have five. So there's a quorum that can still properly take the vote because a quorum is four. So you can just note that in the, in the minutes, and then everyone else can, can properly vote on it.
Okay, sounds good. And to be, to be clear, for, for the record, I have nothing to do with this initiative. I never heard of it until the board back came out. Nevertheless, as an employee, I don't feel like I should be voting on this, so I will, I will just not vote.
Trustee Ursink?
You know, I'm kind of glad this was pulled. I'd love to hear a little bit of more about what their plans are for those three days at, at Water and, you know, what, you know, is, you know, what their plans are for, you know, just, just maintaining and keeping the beach clean? And is, will public have access to that, or is it gonna be closed for the public? We'd just love to know kind of the high level details on, on this project.
The public will always have access during any permitted park and beach application that comes to you. From my understanding, they're just doing some filming during the day, and it's not going to be on all three days. They just put in those additional two days for purposes of brain.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the park and beach permit for Northwestern Mutual on October 6 through 8, 2021?
So moved. Second.
Okay, so a motion by trustee Baldoff, seconded by trustee Backhorst, is there any further discussion? All right, hearing none, all those in favor, show up hands or voice.
Aye.
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 Okay, any opposed? And motion carries by zero with trustee Warren not voting. Thank you. Moving on to item seven, citizens to be heard, this matters, this item is for matters not on the agenda this evening. Discussion may follow comment on non-agenda items or discussion enacted may come at future meetings. Is there anyone in the, members of public who would like to be heard this evening on items not on the agenda? We had two residents that were registered to speak, but I don't know if it was for citizen to be heard or item eight.
So, I'm Linnea Sunstrom, I'm at 1320 East Lake Bluff. So actually in regard to item number eight, but the way the agenda is written, it was not clear if you were taking public comment on that agenda item. So I can shut up for now.
Yes, that is, since it's an ordinance change, there'll be a public, item 8A is the public hearing for that item. And then item nine is the consideration by the village board.
Okay.
So if you are willing to hold your comment till the public hearing, I would appreciate it.
Okay, that's fine.
All right.
Okay. My comment is also on 8A.
Great, we'll look forward to hearing you during that item. Anyone else here to be heard on matters not on the agenda? Is anybody seeing any hands? I don't see. Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to item 8A, well, eight public hearings tonight. We do have one hearing, as we just noted, for ordinance 3029 and ordinance amendment related to front and street side yard patio requirement as detailed in 535-NS to section two of chapter 535 zoning. So this has been at design review board and was approved and then moved on to plan commission and was approved there. And director gripen trog can present it to us this evening.
Thank you, President Mckegg. I have a brief overview of the information that was also provided in your packet. So this is a public hearing, October 4, 2021, regarding 535-9F, two patio requirements as stipulated in the zoning chapter. Currently, the village does regulate front and street side yard patios, however, they do not regulate side or rear yard patios. What, what is before you tonight is what staff is referring to, a code cleanup to facilitate more efficient staff and design review board administration. This is being brought to you as a result from a recent board of appeals ruling. This was, as you mentioned, President Mckegg, recommended by both the design review board and plan commission after discussion in three meetings. There's three primary aspects to what is being proposed. The first would clarify what qualifies as a patio. The definition would be included within the parameters of six-foot dimensions in both directions with a 64-square-foot minimum area. This would exclude both sidewalks and driveways. It would remove the direct adjacency clause. Currently, the clause requires that patios be directly adjacent. However, oftentimes, for drainage and other purposes, applicants often want a row of landscaping in between. And lastly, it would specify the landscaping requirements to be included as the design report has previously administered. Their preference would be to include a definition of year-round continuous landscaping of at least 18 inches in height. And they would include an allowance for a combination of decorative masonry, concrete walls, or planters not higher than three feet. What we see here is a marked up version, so the red language is what the plan commission, or what, sorry, what the design review board has asked for. The blue is what the plan commission has further reviewed and either struck out or added. And the two green are two staff recommendations after the plan commission's recommended version to specifically exclude driveways and to remove the superfluous word "new." So what we have before you here is as included in the staff report, I'd be happy to answer any questions that make them up.
At this time, I'd like to open the public hearing to members of the public. So Donna?
So I would like to address this motion. I really question the screening aspect that's being required. I really don't see what the purpose of this regulation serves. And I feel that it's counter to the village, the village's promotion of Sherwood as a walkable community by isolating residents from our neighbors. I also believe that by limiting the visual, visible presence of people, it, by having a visible presence, it discourages crime. I would ask the board to consider, why do we have these requirements at all? You know, what is the problem that we are looking to address? I believe that this is an outdated policy and an outdated way of looking at communities. And I would ask the board to further review this entire regulation and see what could be removed from regulation. Thank you.
Thank you. Linnea?
Good here. There we go. I have some questions, first of all, and then some concerns. First of all, in your bullet points that Mr. Grip and Trog just presented, it mentions exempting sidewalks and driveways from the area that's gonna be considered a patio. That's not what the ordinance says. The ordinance says only driveways. So that's, that's a problem right there. You need to figure out what it is you're trying to do. I'm not clear what you mean by sidewalk. Do you mean the public sidewalk next to the parkway? Or do you mean the sidewalk that's next to your front door that leads you out to the driveway or to the street? This is a, this is an important question for me because for a lot of reasons. One is public, one is private. One, one requires, I think, different protocols as far as snow removal and that type of thing. So that, those are my first two questions. My third question is, is this whole thing in response to my neighbors across the street who all they really did was take some land and stone out and replace it with concrete in order to make the house more safely accessible? Because both members of the couple are dealing with some physical challenges right now. And I think that's, well, I won't comment yet. Well, yeah, I will. It's pretty ableist to say that somebody can't make their house accessible when they need to. So I don't know if you're counting that little piece of sidewalk that gets them from their car to their front door as sidewalk and therefore exempt? Or if you're considering that a patio, which it certainly isn't, you couldn't put a table there. You couldn't put a couple of chairs there. It's just a wide enough walkway that you can get a walker and a, and a wheelchair, whatever you might need to do. So that's something I need answered, I guess, before I can really comment specifically. I think it's a little odd, like, I, I don't know what inspired this change in the ordinances, but it's just this one property. And the reason I have that impression is because you put a picture of their house and their, their minutes when they took it to the board for, on appeal. And I don't understand why that's even in there. If this is an ordinance that's really supposed to apply to the whole village and benefit the whole village, I don't know why it seems to be so targeted just to this one property. And finally, and then I'll be quiet, well, I'll be quiet for a while. I'm the one that has to see it. I'm directly across the street. This family has done nothing but keep that house in excellent condition for 40 years. I find it very disturbing that they're having to go through this kind of a hassle when they're also dealing with major medical issues. And I'm very uncomfortable by this. And so I would hope that somebody could explain to me, and then as Donna also mentioned, what is the purpose of this? You can put an 18-inch planting around that place, that little walkway that they have. That doesn't shield anything. I mean, I wouldn't be able to see their feet. I could see anything else that was going on. So I really honestly, and I've thought about this quite a bit, I don't understand the purpose of this. So I'm hoping that, that you can answer all my questions. Okay, thank you.
I will, Bart, could you respond to the first few questions? Or as much as you can.
Sure, yeah, so with respect to exempting sidewalks, sidewalks are exempted because a sidewalk would be less than six feet in width. And so the definition requires that the dimension of the paved area be greater than six feet in both directions. So a sidewalk leading from a doorway or elsewhere would be less than six feet in width. And so that's how sidewalks are exempted from this. With respect to why the design review board has requested that screening be specified, over the past three years, they've had various applicants who have questioned their interpretation of what, what natural screening is. The reason this is before you tonight is because this applicant chose to appeal that to the, to the board of appeals. Other applicants have questioned it. It leads to inefficient meetings when we don't have a definition in there of what that means. And so the design review board asked that we clarify what they would like to see in the code. They are not trying to screen people from public view. It is intended for low screening that would soften the transition from the proposed patio area to the public way. And so once again, this is not intended, this is not aimed at anyone specifically. This has been discussed for three, three-plus years in my time there in terms of what they'd like to see for screening. The current code is not clear enough, and clearly, one challenge, the board of appeals said it's not clear enough. The design review board does not want to get rid of that requirement, so they are seeking this specification to be added.
Okay, so I think what I'm asking for then is, is even more specificity because it's not clear what you mean by sidewalk. And as I mentioned, that is not in the ordinance as it's currently worded. And, and I'm not trying to be picky here, but there's good reasons for not putting vegetation next to the sidewalk that you need to keep clear of ice. And then you've got vegetation casting a shadow so that it, it ices up more. You know, this is Wisconsin, there's nothing we can do about that. But we should, I think, take that into account because it's a big safety issue. Okay, thank you.
Philip Shashko?
Hi, I am... I'm sorry. Oh, geez. I wasn't expecting that. I'm so sorry. I'm Dorothy Shashko. I used my husband's email to email you. I would appreciate it if, if the board at this point would consider postponing the final vote on the ordinance changes. I would like you to consider to revisit the exemptions to determine what the patio dimensions are. I will tell you right away, I appreciate very much your, the village's attempt to clarify some of the really vague ordinances that, about patios and screening requirements. I've gone through this for months now, and it's been, it's been a real hardship, both in many, many ways, in my time, in my money, in my motion, and so on, because everything was so vague. And I still feel that there is a big gap that, that needs to be corrected or added into the section one, part eight, in determining how you actually measure a patio. I can give you a specific example, I can give you example. For example, when you determine the dimensions of a driveway, you do not include the lip or the entrance to the driveway nor the public sidewalk. We're not allowed to park there. That's kept open for the community and so on. The same should be applied to a patio. The example, that's my house that you see the picture of. In our case, and I'm sure there are many other cases, part of what they measured to determine the patio dimensions was my walkway. Walkway from my door to the stairway and walkway from my door to the side of the house to get to the garage and the backyard. That should not be included in the dimensions of a patio. If someone comes up my steps to go knock on my back door, they're not going into a patio. They're on a walkway that's coming straight to my door. That should not, that area, the walkway area should be treated like a sidewalk. It is not a patio. You cannot put patio furniture or grills or whatever is normally put on a patio in front of a door. It's a hazard. And in our case, if we need emergency personnel or anything, we can't have anything in front of the door. Every, every building has exits and entrances that are to stay clear. And so including the walkway on a property to do, patio shouldn't included into the, into the dimensions to determine that it is a patio.
Ms. Shashko, did you state your name and address for the record? Am I doing that?
Dorothy Shashko. I live at 4349 North Woodburn Street here in Sherwood.
Okay, thank you.
I apologize, I...
That's okay. And, and I apologize too. That's okay. I apologize also, I have, we've been trying to use a time allowance of, of two to three minutes per speaker, and I did not, I forgot to announce that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So thank you for concluding. No, you're, you're fine, you're fine.
I would also, if I may, I'm planning to, but I would like to also back up what Donna, Donna said, the screening. I don't, I don't...
Thank you.
Now for the screening, in the winter.
Okay, we have that, yeah, we have that noted, thank you. Are there other members of the public? And we can come back to the points that are made during the public hearing during, when the board takes it under consideration in the next item. Are there other members of the public who would like to be heard at this time as part of the public hearing?
I do not see any other hands raised.
Okay, thank you. All right, so at this time, I would close the public hearing at 7:58. I probably forgot to say what time we opened the public hearing, but I think it was 7:45 or so. Okay, and now we would take item nine, a new business, 9A, consider ordinance 3029 and ordinance amendment related to front and street side yard patio requirement as detailed in 535-9F, section two of chapter 535 zoning. So at this point, the, the board can enter into discussion. We can clarify points or questions that were asked by, during the public hearing. We can also entertain a motion, followed by deliberation. And, and then the options are, we can approve the ordinance revision as presented. We can oppose it, we can defer it, we can take action or no action, and there can be a variety of outcomes. So at this time, I would like to know if the trustees have questions, trustee Ursink?
You know, I, I apologize, I have not really done my due diligence on this topic. And, and right now, I feel, you know, I am inadequately prepared for it. But I would love to know a little bit about Ms. Shashko's, you know, patio and how that affects, you know, her and other people in this community, and why that being labeled as a patio is problematic in this situation. So I do apologize, I, I have not done the research on this particular topic. But, but, you know, between the, the residents that just spoke and me reading over the packet here, you know, I'm still, I'm still a bit confused by what's going on here. So if you could just break it down simplistically for me, Bart, that would be, that would be incredible. And explicitly the patio situation that Ms. Shashko is referring to.
I also see attorney bear's hand raised, so I'm gonna call on him first to see if there's any legal guidance that he would like to offer.
I just thought that I could offer a few comments to give sort of the 30,000-foot view because I've, I've been along for the ride as some of these issues have worked their way through plan commission and board of appeals. So what we do is we start with the general idea and the general concept that when homes have patios, for the most part, they're in the rear yard area. And they're otherwise shielded from, you know, the prying eyes of everyone else around or the, you know, if someone's having a, a, a party back there, or they're doing whatever they're doing back there, it's generally in a private area, it's in the backyard. And the, and generally, that's where patios and, and, you know, that, that type of entertainment area for a, in a residential property, that's where that's located in the backyard. And for aesthetic reasons and other reasons, there's, there's uniformity that's in the front yard and the side yard. However, they create this exception, and it says, hey, we recognize that there's some lots within the village that might be on a corner and don't really have a backyard. Or they might be on the end of a, a dead end where, because of the way that the alley is set up, there's no, there's really no side yard and, and no backyard. And so the, the deal is, the code, what the code says to those unique properties is to say, hey, we understand it's not fair for you to not have the ability to have a patio and, and a place to entertain and, and essentially have a backyard like everyone else in the village. So what we're gonna do is we're gonna allow you to do that with some additional requirements. And one of the main requirements is, look, if you're gonna have it in that side yard or the front side, set, front yard setback, it's gotta have, it's gotta have this screening. And that, correct me if I'm wrong, Bart, but that's been the general rule, and that's been the policy of the village and the board, literally, I believe, for decades. Is that fair?
Correct, the current code says natural vegetation.
Okay, so the, so that's been the policy in the village is to say, hey, we're gonna allow you to do this in your side yard or your front yard setback if you have a unique situation on your property. Because it's not fair for you, because you don't have a backyard, we're gonna allow you to do it as long as you jump through these, you know, additional hoops which are part of it as you screen it, right? So that's been the policy for years and years. So the, you gotta define what a patio is, and again, that's also been the same way for, for decades. And it defines the dimensions as to say, okay, this is either a patio or it's not a patio. So that's always been there. Nothing is changing about that. Correct me if I'm wrong, Bart, but I, my understanding of walking through this discussion is the only thing is changing is there being more specific about how they're defining... Is there being more specific about how they're defining the term screening? Um, the screenings that are required and, and explaining to a potential applicant who wants to build. A patio in their side yard setback or their front yard setback. It, the idea is to give them more information and be more prepared for what they have to do to comply with the ordinance, is that? Bart, is that the purpose and intent?
Correct, that's, that's half of the purpose and intent, the other purpose, as we've discussed, is to define when something is, uh, large enough to be considered a patio. And so if there's a dimension of less than six feet, say it was, you know, five foot ten inches by thirty feet long, that would be considered a sidewalk. Um, when it gets beyond six feet, there are additional uses for that paved area. And so whether or not you use it as a sidewalk or you use it to store, um, a table or other equipment. Um, village staff just needs to have a dimensional requirement on there so that when we see applications for. Paved surfaces in the front yard and street side yard, we know whether or not that's treated as a driveway, which in this case is exempted within the definition. A sidewalk, which would be exempted as long as it's less than six feet in one of those dimensions. Or a patio when it's six feet in both directions for a total of sixty-four square feet or more. So there's two areas that we're hoping to clarify is when, um, paved areas go beyond what is considered a sidewalk. Um, something passable to go from one place to the next and can be used for storage of other items. And then, um, secondly, to, to clarify what the design review, design review board wants to see in terms of screening. To help soften that paved surface from the right of way, um, so that it's not simply just a, uh, a, a concrete. Um, you know, a paved concrete area in someone's street side yard or front side yard, they're looking to have some sort of, um. Decorative, um, uh, treatment to soften the edge of that from the harsh, um, harshness of the, of the, of a stone surface.
So the second purpose and intent of, of this clarification then, if you will, is to, is to give staff. The tools to say, well, hey, yeah, we've got, we've got some cement here on the side yard or the front yard setback, but it doesn't fit. Because it's not big enough, we can exempt it and we don't have to call it a, a, uh, a patio, if you will. And then these other requirements don't apply, it, it helps everyone understand when the requirements do or do not apply.
I, I would agree and I, I hope that answers your question, Arthur, if not, I'm happy to.
And I, you know, I assume that, uh, the Shashko family, that this is beyond six feet, right? This is, the width is beyond six feet of this particular concrete structure. Classifying it as a patio.
Correct, it is.
And to be clear, we're not, we're not ruling, we're not ruling on this specific property or this specific patio. The only thing that, um, based on my understanding that relates to this. Is that this resident was, um, inconvenienced because the screening definition was not clear enough. That, and so that inspired a review of the ordinance so that the directions can be more clear. Um, to future residents, so we are not ruling on this specific and there is no.
I understand, I, I just, the, the picture is obviously front and center in the package, so. Um, and I, and I, I see some hands up there and I, and I think the public hearing part of this is over, correct? Or can we talk to the residents within the, within the.
So here, yeah, so here's how I'd like to proceed, so typically when we close public comment, we don't reopen it. However, if trustees need more information from any of the members of public, of the public who have spoken. You can make a motion, you can request that of the chair and, and we will, um, you know, facilitate that discussion. However, I do wanna say to the members of the public that are here, the public hearing was the time for public comment and we won't be going back and forth. Um, because it's very important that the trustees be able to discuss and get the information they need. To determine whether or not action can be taken this evening. So thank you, so, um, trustee Earthing, did you have a question?
Um, I'd love to circle back maybe after we hear, um, after we hear from some of the other trustees on this. But, um, you know, I just, I'd love, I'd love to hear from everybody else and then, um, you know, maybe circle back with some other comments that I may have.
Yeah, and I also wanna acknowledge, I know, I see Barbara Kylie Miller has her hand up, um, and I'm not sure, you're a member of the plan commission. Um, so where we are now is in discussion of the trustees and so. Um, where, did you, was it your intent to speak during the public hearing? Barbara, and we just didn't see you.
No, it wasn't, um, I just wanted to correct something that, um, attorney Bayer said. Uh, we have not allowed, um, patios or porches in the front or side yard setbacks for decades. It's only been about two or three years since the plan commission passed this ordinance. Allowing patios in the front yard setback with the, the street side, so I think it's, it's pretty natural. That with a new ordinance and you're trying to fine tune it or finesse exactly what's allowed and what isn't, what's the intent of the ordinance. That you would go back and, you know, kind of revise the language just so there's no, um, ambiguity. For residents or the design review board, what the intent of the ordinance is. So it's relatively new and so I don't think it's unusual to be making these kind of adjustments, that's it.
Okay, thank you. Um, so I'd like to hear from other trustees and then if they, if they need to hear more from the, um. Members of the public who are here this evening, they can make that indication. So trustee Warren, did you have your hand up?
Or that was not me raising my hand, that was me scratching my hand.
Oh, scratching, okay. All right, other trustees that have questions or discussion, uh, questions? Or I could entertain a motion, trustee Earthing?
Um, can we, can we talk a little bit more about the intent for this, uh, the screening, what, what is the intent for this? That's the question I have.
I, I asked the design review board to clarify that within the earliest conversation, the intent was to soften the look. Of a hard paved surface in someone's, um, front or street side yard. The intention is that, um, it's understood that, you know, driveways and sidewalks have that, have that edge. But when it comes to a patio which is used for other things and or possibly storage. The, um, desire was to have something to soften the appearance of the paved surface. Um, from the, from the paved surface to the public right of way, um, and this is not, um, uh. Being treated like a sidewalk or a driveway which they acknowledge can have that hard surface, they're saying if it's something that you want to have an extra. Piece of pavement for, that's what they would like to see.
And it is. Just imagine if there was, if there was no regulation at all and essentially every backyard could be put in the front yard. And imagine what driving around the neighborhoods would look like, that, that's basically why it's there.
No, I get it, so, so it's, it's essentially to shield the community from the things that are happening in people's yards, you know, if, if somebody has. You know, there's, you know, whatever it may be, they, they're trying to shield, shield that, no, um. Am I wrong?
It's not, it's not intended to hide it, it's just intended to provide a, a softer visual buffer that landscaping can offer. Um, so part of this, um, uh, ordinance amendment would also allow for planters or seat walls to be used in combination with that. So it's just, it's, it does, it's a design intent to, you know, not allow for, you know, ten foot by ten foot paved areas, um, with, with no, um. Uh, transition.
Okay, and then just kind of my follow, my follow up to that is, wha- what's the penalty for, for not having screening?
Um, theoretically, we could probably have you remove it for not getting a permit with the requirements.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Um, I see trustee Baldoff, do you mind, trustee Baldoff, with all due respect, is it okay if I interject a question here that has to do with the screening? Um, Bart, is it my understanding that if, if a applicant, um, could not. Um, include screening due to accessibility or mobility issues that they could apply for an exception? Or is the screening caused any kind of safety issue?
Correct, hardships are always, um, an option through the board of appeals where they could say that it's not feasible in their particular property. Um, so yes, that, that, that variance for hardship is always an op, is always an option.
Okay, trustee Baldoff?
Um, yeah, I just had, um, a couple, a, a question, but also I wanted to say, you know, thank you to. Staff and to, um, you know, our plan commission and board of review for taking on. Um, the tedious process of looking back through old ordinances and code to make revisions. I know it's a, I know it's a very tedious process, I have done that before in my professional life. Uh, so I know it can be a big undertaking, um, but it's necessary and it helps to save a lot of time. For our staff and for, and for our residents, uh, to, that volunteer to serve on some of these. Committees and commissions that we have, I think we're very fortunate to have such an engaged, um. Community that wants to serve and it can be a deterrent to people who wanna serve on some of these bodies. When, when they are bogged down with so many requests for appeals or variances. Because of code issues that we could just rectify and it doesn't mean that what we come up with will be. One size fits all, um, that's, there's a reason we have an appeal process and people can, um, ask for exceptions, so. Um, you know, I think that's important, um. And then, uh, the, the question I had was, how does this impact people? As I heard, um, Barbara had mentioned, you know, the, the fact that. There were not patios allowed in the front for a number of years, is this only applying to like new construction? Like, how are we looking at this for people who have existing structures versus people who are wanting to build new ones? Uh, and is, is there a difference?
Correct, the existing structures would be grandfathered into, um, their, their prior approvals, so as long as they had prior approvals. Under the previous code or under their previous, um, reviews and for the design review board, those would still be maintained as is. This would only apply if passed to new applications that come into the village office.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, um, attorney Bear, was there something you wanted to add?
Well, uh, no, I just, I didn't know if that question was directed at my, myself, Bart, but I did wanna thank, uh, uh, Ms. Kylie Miller. Because, um, uh, my intent was to convey earlier that for decades, my point was that I was trying to make is that for decades. There, there were no, no allowance made at all to put this in the side. Or front yard setback, if you had one of those strange, unconforming lots. And that the purpose and intent of it was to rectify that situation by saying, well, wait, that's not fair, that was the point I was trying to make. And I think I said it backwards, but thank you for pointing that out, but that, that's why they did it. And this is just a simple clarification of, yes, we're gonna allow these things in the front and side yard setback. Um, and then they realized that they needed to tweak the ordinance a little bit by saying, well, it seems a little vague on what screenings mean. And it seems a little vague on, well, how large does it have to be to qualify, you know, has a, has a. Um, a patio versus is it just a, a sidewalk or, or is it an extension of the driveway? Or is it, you know, is it some paving that's technically not a, a, a patio? So thank, thank you for that further clarification, that's what I was intending or attempting to convey and I think I may have, uh, said it backwards, so thank you.
So to be clear, what I'm hearing is that this, um, ordinance change would not. Um, preclude someone from asking for an exception if any of these requirements created a hardship. And it's also not, um, counting the sidewalk as part of a patio. Um, so that people are burdened by additional requirements, it's really to provide. Um, guidance to staff and for applicants as well as boards and commissions. So that they can move through and allow people to improve their homes. At, um, you know, in, in a more, um, efficient and, uh, welcoming customer responsive manner. Um, what I'm wondering, uh, trustee Arndorfer, trustee Warren, trustee Bachhorst, do you have any, um, questions? And I also wanna hear from trustee Earthing whether you are still feeling like you couldn't take action tonight? Because if there, if that is the case, then, you know, making a motion to defer is an option. However, you know, I wanna hear from everyone where you're thinking.
I was just gonna, I was just gonna say, I don't, Jim, I don't, don't, I'm sorry if I'm jumping you, I didn't.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I just wanna just quickly say that, thank you, thank you to Bart for all your hard work on this ordinance and, and thank you for some of the historical perspective. Uh, commissioner Kylie Miller, um, I didn't, I'm not gonna beat a dead horse here, I think that, you know, trustee Earthing and trustee Baldoff. Um, and asked a lot of the questions that I had, so I don't have too much more in the way of questions. But I just wanted to thank, um, thank the people that have worked on this ordinance and to try to get clarity around what the requirements are.
All right.
Trustee Arndorfer?
Yeah, I guess, and I know this is not about a specific, um, address or anything like that. But I mean, I, you know, based on my own experience, I live on a corner, um, you know, we have, um, you know, as. Part of it is obscured from the street by a gate, but then our backyard, you know, is, we've got a fence and we have. Uh, you know, our narrow backyard exposure to, uh, Downer has a fence and, uh, you know, some. Some, uh, you know, shrubbery when it doesn't die, but, um, you know, I, I would not want to take that out to the sidewalk. Without any screening or anything like that, just, you know, for, you know, put concrete down for, you know, obvious reasons, I mean, but. You know, I mean, here it looks like this property and I'm sure there are similar properties, you know, do have like some separation between. The street and, you know, the sidewalk, they, they have a buffer, right, I mean, it's not. It's not like this patio is right on top of the sidewalk or on top of passersby or anything like that. So I'm, I'm just wondering if the fact, um. That there is a, a buffer like that, you know, spatial if not height, uh, you know, factors into any considerations. And how we, how we look at how these things are handled, um, you know, I mean, I recognize you can't, uh, build an ordinance around every single. You know, side, uh, project like this, but just wondering if that was anything that might be ta, taken into account. I mean, I do think, um, you know, obviously. The, there'll be availability of variances and stuff like this would be important, that's all I got, thank you.
Bart, can you respond?
Yeah, just a quick response, topography is not built into this code and so. Um, there is no current exceptions for any sort of topography issues like that, once again, those would be something that you could appeal to the board of appeals. If you felt as though your site was, um, had unique circumstances that precluded or disallowed, um, the screening as requested to be installed.
And I think, so just as a reminder, you know, three years of discussion on this. Those groups have gone through the nitty gritty of these types of, uh, scenarios, so I know that we're all kind of, this is new to us. Um, but these are definitely the kinds of questions that, um, design review board would have considered. And, and went into the revisions that, that came to us at plan commission. Um, and I do believe in this situation or, or there was another one where the board of appeals did, um, forego the screening. Feeling that the grass actually did create a screening because of it being raised. So I remember that as part of our discussion at plan commission, so there really are a lot of ways that residents can, um, ask for an exception. Trustee Bachhorst?
Thank you, sorry, I blew my mouth, um, I, uh, would just like to say thank you to everyone who's, who have, has worked on this. Um, and the planning commission, this has been ongoing for a while and I appreciate that, um, commissioner Barbara Kelly Miller is here as well. Um, and I agree that this zoning code, this was not created in order for one person and it is hard to be all encompassing. But, um, this update has been needed for a while and this type of exemption has come before the planning commission time and time again in the past. So, um, we worked a long time on this and I understand not all the trustees here, you know, have been privy to the planning code. I'm sorry, to the planning commission meetings, um, nor, you know, part of those discussions. But I will say from that body of, of seven people, I forget what the, what the count was, was it six one, Bart? Or seven zero?
I believe it was unanimous.
Okay, so it was a unanimous decision and, um, just a little backstory and little information for the, uh, people who are not on the planning commission. The planning commission generally, um, you think we move slowly on the, on the village board of trustees. We often move pretty slowly on the planning commission as well, there's a lot of deliberation, a lot of information, a lot of input. Um, from staff and other experts in the field, so this was not something that was designed lightly. It took a lot of input and, um, a lot of meetings and I, I would ask that, you know, tonight, that we take a vote on this. Um, and I would say if you're not comfortable with taking a vote on this tonight, okay, that's fine, but I would ask going forward. Because this has come up several times that you ask questions of those of us who have been working on this in advance. And I'm talking to my fellow trustees here right now, um, so. So that we can all, you know, get to a place where we can move the ball forward. So I'm prepared to vote yes on this ordinance change tonight. I appreciate again the hard work and the deliberation here. But we are spending considerable amount of time when we have spent many, 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 many hours in the Planning Commission. And the result was, as Director Grape and Doug said, a unanimous vote in support of this change. Thank you.
At this time, I would like to ask if there's a motion. And I guess trustee Ursink, if you're not ready to vote, I mean, are you going to make a motion to defer? Or have you changed your position?
You know, I I'm on the fence a little bit, to be honest with you. And I would like to know, I'd like to, I'd like to do a little bit more research. And, you know, I know everybody's already done the research for me. And and it seems like there's a lot of consensus here. And I would assume this board has also consensus. So I think it'd be a waste of the board's time if I made the motion to to defer. But that's kind of where I'd be leaning personally. So that's all I got.
All right. I would entertain a motion unless anyone needs to hear additional comments from any of the neighbors that are here.
President Mckegg?
Yes.
So I will move, I don't have it in front of me, I'm sorry. But I'd like to approve ordinance, whatever it is, if someone's willing to read the motion.
Thirty twenty nine. Bart, would you, do you mind reading us the motion?
Sure. The motion in the packet, if so desired, is, "I move to approve ordinance three zero two nine, an ordinance amendment related to modifications to front yard and street side yard patio requirements as detailed in five thirty five nine F two of chapter five thirty five zoning."
Thank you, Bart.
Is that the motion?
That is exactly, yes, I'd like to, I'd like to make the motion that was presented in the packet. So thank you.
Okay. Is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by trustee Warren. Any further discussion by trustees? Trustee Ursink?
You know, would it be possible to hear the residents before we we make a vote?
Yeah, that's what I said is that you, if you need to hear more from the residents, then please indicate that.
I would love to hear from both both Dorothy and Donna.
Okay. Ms. Sashko?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I would, I would like to emphasize why I'm at this meeting tonight. The exception, the dimensions of a patio should not include the actual walkway that we have to have. I just want to clarify that because most of the discussion has been on the screening. I am talking about how you measure a patio. And if you include, and I'm, I'm not here to fight my case. I'm here to explain that a walkway should not be considered part of a patio.
Yes, I don't believe that that is considered. Bart, could you clarify? Could you confirm that, please?
We, we, we as staff, we as, as the village cannot identify how people are going to use the proposed pavement. And so what is before you tonight is if you have a walkway that is six feet or less, that would not be included if that, if your dimension is greater than six feet in both dimension, it would be. We cannot identify which areas are passed through traffic or which areas are suitable for tables. Because whether it's the current resident or future residents, if that area is greater than six feet, it is our interpretation that it is, it is usable for more than sidewalk purposes. So that is where, that is where our draft comes from.
But that was included in my particular case, and I don't want that to happen to other people in Shorewood. And yes, we can appeal, but it's very expensive. This has cost me close to $400.
Okay. Thank you. I'm sorry about that. Yeah, thank you.
If the ordinance is clean, other people don't have to go through what I do. Though there's no, there's no, nothing unusual or difficult to figure out from a doorway to to the stairway that that's a walkway. That's not a patio. But that is included in my patio dimensions. And I felt that should put into ordinance so that it is an exemption exemption from the dimensions to determine the six feet. I don't, I'm reasonable.
Okay, thank you. Donna, trustee Ursink, wanted to hear more from you.
Thank you. In part of attorney bear's explanation was talking about using backyards for entertainment. Am I hearing that we are being excluded from using our front yards for entertaining without getting a permit? That is almost the spirit of what I'm hearing.
Yeah.
Point that out.
Could you, thank you, I appreciate that.
Not, not in the least. Certainly you could do that. It's just when you're talking about a permanent structure like a patio, which is defined here by not, not only six feet long, but six feet wide. Bart can reference whether or not, I imagine they probably don't find many sidewalks that are both six feet wide by, at least six feet long by six feet wide. They're, they're talking, think about this as your, your backyard and your front yard regulation, right? You start, you start from.
Why am I being told how I can use my front yard differently than my backyard?
Well, there, there's all kinds of other zoning regulations that already do that. There's specific setback requirements. There's certain things that can be and can't be in the front yard. And that's, and those regulations exist all over the state of Wisconsin for everything from uniformity purposes to ensuring that anybody that looks down the line of sight on a, on a, on a street has certain ability to have those sightlines for traffic. And there's a whole bunch of different regulations that govern the use of certain things in front yards, backyard, side yards. And the idea here was, again, as I mentioned earlier, for decades, if you had a weird or nonconforming lot where you really didn't have a quote unquote backyard, you were kind of out of luck because you couldn't, you couldn't put a permanent space like a patio in your side yard or your front yard. And so when, when they changed that and said, here, yeah, you can do that now, it came with some caveats that said, okay, well, because we want to make sure that the character and and there's some uniformity of visuals and and the aesthetics and things like that, that, that if you're going to have a patio in those two areas, not the backyard, but the side or the front, there's got to be some screenings and there has to be some other things so that we can keep that uniformity. And that's, that's essentially what what this is. But Bart, if, correct me if I'm wrong, but the way that I read this is that that area has to be not only six feet long, but also it references six feet wide. So if you have just a standard sidewalk, my guess is that the, those from the, the planning department are not going to be classifying that as a quote unquote patio. And there's not going to be any regulation there. What, the, the only thing that's going to get regulated is if you've got, if you've got six by six, which is substantially wider than your average, you know, sidewalk. That's, if I'm understanding it correctly, Bart, that's what the, the plan commission would be interested in having a look at and then saying, okay, because that's an area where, you know, you could set up, you know, you could set up on the patio there, that that's where the screenings would come into place. Is that fair, Bart?
Correct. And it's not only six by six, but it's also a minimum square feet of eighty four or sixty four square feet. So it is intended for areas that would be larger and could be utilized for tables, chairs, et cetera, things of that nature. The, the, the Design Review Board is simply looking to clarify screening requirements that they have administered for the past three years. And so this was seen as a code efficiency for both staff, residents, and the Design Review Board. That's why this is before us tonight.
And in that, that clarification, if you will, will help the village inspectors essentially be able to avoid confusion on properties where, hey, that's, that doesn't meet the, the square foot requirement. It's not six feet wide, it's not six feet long, et cetera, et cetera. We have no interest in regulating, we don't have to do anything over there. That's the other thing it's designed to do. Fair?
Correct. It is not intended to limit someone's use. It's intended to make it clear for village staff and residents as to under what circumstances these, these requirements are to be brought to the Design Review Board for consideration.
And let me be clear, this, this ordinance exists. So if for some reason this fails tonight, the old ordinance is going to be. So there's no, you know, it's not like it goes away or it, or it happens. It exists. What's before us tonight is revising it to make it more customer responsive and directive for staff, residents, and boards and commissions that are involved in these types of applications. Trustee Ursink?
So just to be clear, if somebody has a walkway that is three foot long, and then there's another three feet of concrete attached to that walkway, that is now considered a patio? Or does it have to be nine feet total with the six feet of concrete plus the three foot of walkway?
It needs to be six feet in both dimensions and a minimum of sixty four square feet in area.
So Bart, if you had a, what appeared to be a sidewalk that was no greater than three feet wide, but extended along the side of the property for ten feet, you're not going to classify that as a, as a patio?
Because one of the dimensions is not greater than six feet. So you're allowed to have a sidewalk, you know, six feet by, or five foot ten by thirty feet long. Sidewalks are not intended to be regulated with this. They are not currently regulated with this. The issue that we as staff have is that when people ask us what the difference between a sidewalk and a patio is, we have no definition for it. So the intention of this is to clarify that. So when these applications come to us, we're able to administer them efficiently and not have to go through three, four, or five meetings on them.
So a resident could say, hey, I can go out with a tape measure and no, I don't have to get a permit to replace a couple of tiles on the sidewalk. Or this is large enough and this constitutes, say, a patio, I got to call the village. Is that kind of what it's intended to do?
Correct.
And I believe that the other, correct me if I'm wrong, didn't the original, the revision that came to Plan Commission, I feel like had a requirement that it couldn't be adjacent to a sidewalk? And then it was changed so that it could be adjacent so that A, not to preclude people that have smaller yards or if there's a slope. So to make it to increase people's ability to put in a patio and work with small lots that we have in Shorewood. And also it could save them money, you know, because you're, you're creating a surface area, but you're utilizing something that already exists. So it wasn't, but maybe, correct me if I'm wrong, maybe I'm not recollecting that.
No, correct. The, the current code requires that patios be directly adjacent to a, to the principal structure that has been not liked by many applicants who have mature landscaping that they're trying not to remove, that they don't want to have pavement up against their house for stormwater purposes. And so the Design Review Board has allowed landscaping to be kept in between the house and the patio. So this does expand the opportunity for applicants to do that without having to, you know, discuss some sort of exception with the, with the Design Review Board. The Design Review Board has been liberal in their interpretation of allowing that to take place, but they would like for the code to be cleaned up so as to remove that, you know, from, once again, from challenge. So they're removing the requirement to be directly adjacent in recognition that homeowners have oftentimes wanted to maintain their landscaping that is up against the house and/or that they don't want to pave up against the house for drainage purposes and flooding, et cetera.
Okay, so that was, thank you for clarifying that. So we've had pretty extensive discussions. So basically, you know, the board is faced with this choice. You know, we either approve this and modify it in a way that, you know, for the benefits of tonight, or we, it fails and it stays the same. So, and it, it maintains the vague parts of the ordinance that have caused inconvenience to people. So in my mind, it kind of boils down to that. We've had a lot of discussion. I would like to see, and we're starting to repeat ourselves, so I don't want to, I think we all are clear with the points that have been made, the questions that have been answered, the clarifications that's been offered, that's been offered. And I appreciate all the, the thought that has gone into this discussion. Without calling the question, I'm just wondering, I just want to take a read of the trustees. Do you feel ready to take a vote at this time or do you need more deliberation? So kind of a, I'm seeing a head nod, okay, thumbs up. Okay. So with that, it would be a roll call vote?
Yes. Trustee Arndorfer?
Hi.
Trustee Moore Baldoff?
Hold on, I'm going to turn my camera.
Sorry, did somebody make the motion or do we need to still make the motion?
The motion has been made and seconded.
Okay, sorry, I'm.
And you seconded. It's okay.
Okay.
So the motion, what, do you want to read, do you want us to read the motion again?
Yes, please.
Why don't we do that?
In essence, that it's longer in wording, but it's to approve the ordinance with the revisions that's submitted to this evening.
Okay, so yes, done for me.
Okay.
Trustee Bachhorst?
Yes.
Trustee Ursink?
No.
Trust, President Mckegg?
Hi.
Trustee Warren? Motion carries five one.
Okay. Thank you very much, everyone. I, I'm just going to make a comment. I believe that the next, on October eighteenth, we'll be having a committee as a whole, which where, where we will reconsider the parking zoning change, the modifications to the parking code. This is, so tonight, and that modification is part of a kind of what will be a year-long initiative on cleaning up codes, modifying, making them more contemporary, more efficient, more reflective of the youth and that the residents are asking for and needing for contemporary youth. So please, if you need extra time in considering, we will, we will make it clear when these ordinance cleanups are coming. And please set the time aside to ask questions and do the research so that you're prepared to have the discussion and take action as possible. Thank you. All right. Moving on, that concludes new business for this evening. Moving on to report to village officials. Village president, I do not believe that I have anything tonight. Report. Village trustee. Trustee Ursink?
Yeah, so just, you know, conversations we're having right now with the, the bid, the, the guys in, that all of the costs for holiday decorations are coming in like extraordinarily high. So typically, the bid will purchase a Christmas tree or will contract with a company to, to bring in a Christmas tree or a holiday tree or, you know, a tree with decorations on it and lights on it. And those costs have usually come in around a thousand, fifteen hundred dollars. And we've been able to negotiate and trade sponsorship of the lighting event. This year, the company that has done that in the past is not interested in a trade of sponsors, is in a trade of sorts. And, and the costs are now five to six thousand dollars for that tree. So, you know, we are right now contemplating as a board what we want to do. And it looks like the board is kind of moving in a different direction from a tree. So, but that, that process is still ongoing. You know, we thought about different interesting, like art installations with lights. You know, so the, we're kind of all over the place on what we want to do with that. But just, just kind of throw it out there that that is, that is kind of the direction that we're heading. And if anybody has any suggestions or wants to see, you know, see something in particular, you could email the bid, the bid, and, and we can kind of, you can be part of those conversations. you know, see something in particular, you could email the bid, the bid, and, and we can kind of, you can be part of those conversations. The same can also be said for, you know, we also, you know, we also host the snowflakes that you see on light poles. And we've, I think ever since I've been on the bid, that's been the conversation that we've talked about the most is like, what do we do at these? Because right now DPW is, does not want to hold, you know, they don't want to, you know, they, they basically have a garage space dedicated to the snowflakes and they don't want them anymore. And, you know, so we've been trying to brainstorm what to do with holiday decorations. And we talked to another company, got a quote, and the quote was almost a hundred and some odd thousand dollars. You know, so, you know, when we do events like the, the Shorewood Feast or these kind of like smaller events and, and we, you know, make a profit here and there, we are solely thinking of how can we pay for holiday decorations? You know, and I think, you know, just to put in perspective, with the feast, when the feast was finished, I think the bid walked away with around ten thousand dollars. So that's about ten percent of, of the overall cost for holiday decorations. I just kind of wanted to throw that out there publicly and just know that, you know, we're, we're trying our best to figure out the best, some good solutions for the holiday decorations and, and different things we can do going forward. So that's all I got.
Trustee Eindorfer?
Yeah, I just wanted to extend my appreciation to the hard work that the members of the Plan Commission took last week in going through all the, you know, considerations regarding the granting of the parking exception for the new develop, or in process development at Oakland and Lake Love. I don't necessarily agree with the outcome, but I do appreciate the hard work that everyone put into it and considerable thought. And, you know, including, you know, President Mckegg and trustee Backhorst. So thanks for the, thanks for the hard work. I appreciate it. And Bart, by the way, thanks.
Thank you. Other trustees report?
Trustee Backhorst? Yes, thank you. So there has been little to no activity on the former Eschweller House at thirty-five, thirty-four North Lake Drive. And I am looking into, I'm not saying this is the best land use, but have some questions I'm generating and maybe some others on this village board, since we're looking at historic preservation as well as affordable housing in Shorewood, about the potential of using that parcel if Chris Abley and company, excuse me, decide that they would sell it. I mean, as we know, there was a two point some million dollar home that was demolished. And right now, it's a, it's just basically a, you know, a land or a land parcel. So we've been speaking about affordable housing. We've extended TIP ones closing, TIP ones closing. And it's about, I forget how many square feet, but it's a rather immense amount of land. And we have an opportunity right now to potentially explore a mixed use or not mixed use, but affordable housing plus. So just wanted to put that out there that this is something I'll be bringing up. I don't know whether or not it's viable. I don't know, like I said before, whether or not it's the best land use for our village, but as we know, a vacant lot doesn't serve anyone. And we do have a need for more housing in this village. And this may or may not be a prime opportunity for us. So that's all I have on that. Thank you.
Trustee Baldoff or trustee Warren, any update? Okay. Great, village manager.
I just wanted to update the board and the public that we had tentatively planned and doing budget wrap up on October fourteenth, which would have been next week, Thursday. And we're going to be canceling that meeting and doing the budget wrap up prior to our regularly scheduled meeting on October eighteenth. So the board can plan on utilizing the committee time prior to our regular meeting on October eighteenth for that budget wrap up session. Thank you.
Moving on to item eleven, items for future consideration. I have one. The item of, at the last Plan Commission meeting, Commissioner Kudo questioned the appointment process for Plan Commissioners as far as the trustee member. And so I conferred with Attorney Bear and it turns out that one of our code, I think it's sixteen dash two regarding Plan Commission appointments by the president is not in alignment with a statute change. So actually, our code says that the commission appointment of a trustee needs to be confirmed by a vote of the village board. That is not actually the case due to an amended state statute. So I would like to, for us to consider amending our code sixteen dash two so that it is in, it is actually reflective of what we have been doing and because that is what is the directive from the state. So I guess I would make a motion to, and that would go to JP and L to review code, village code sixteen dash two. And I am seeing trustee Backhorst raising her hand.
Yeah, so, thank you, President Mckegg. So what I'm hearing is that it's a housekeeping issue that in order for us to conform to the revised state statute. So, I mean, you can do it, item of future consideration, or as the chair, you probably can just put this on the agenda. But do you need a motion or are you going to make it?
I made a motion.
Okay, I'll second.
Okay. Motion by President Mckegg, seconded by trustee Backhorst. All those in favor, show a hand or voice. Okay, I see five. Melissa, okay. So it's unanimous that it would be directed to, thank you. So we would direct that item to JP and L at a future date, agenda, time allowing, and for that housekeeping item. Housekeeping measure. Any other items for future consideration? All right, seeing none. I would take a motion to adjourn.
Moved.
I'll second that. Whatever.
Motion by trustee Backhorst, seconded by trustee Warren. All those in favor? I show hands or voice?
I.
Okay, any opposed?
I'm going to oppose. Record time of us getting out of here.
Yeah, I was going to say, I've never, this is insane. I mean, can we, you guys want to hang out and talk?
Actually, by the way, by the way, guys, this is how it used to be when I first got on the board. We're out by nine. Well done.
I guess this is, you are objecting to adjourning. And I do want to apologize to the members of the public who participated in the public hearing that I forgot to give. This, this is a new practice of trying to use time allowances just to keep things more linear, but not to discourage participation. So I apologize for my awkwardness. I had a visitor from upstairs using my oven and he was a little distracting, but very cute. Anyway, so I will, we are adjourning at eight fifty-two.
With Wes and Tammy saying no.
Right.
I say yes, to be clear.
Just kidding.
We just need a vote.
We're voting aye, right?
Aye.
Aye.
Point of order. No, I'm joking.
I think it's unanimous.